We'll go ahead and call the January ninth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. And we're going to ask Randy Wallace, who is not here, if anyone wants to volunteer to say the invocation and pledge.
I'd be happy to do so.
You want to do it? Councilman Cisco will do that. If you would, please rise. Thank you.
I'm going to have a follow-up. We thank you for the many blessings that you give each one of us each day, dear Lord. That's a gift of life, Father. Father, we ask you to be with us now. We conduct business for our beloved city. We ask that each one do with an open mind and an open heart, Father. Lord, just give us confidence in everything we do and give us the wisdom. Father, be with our great state and our great nation. We ask for peace, dear Lord, and we ask that we all get along with each other, Father, and do the things that we're supposed to do and to do as we say we'll do, dear Lord. Lord, we ask you to forgive us of our sins. Guide, guard, direct us. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Good prayer.
Okay, item three. Anita, I think you can show Council President, with the exception of Councilman Brown and Councilman Wallace, if you would. Item four is approval of the minutes, the December fifth, two thousand seventeen, City Council meeting. And members have received a copy of those minutes. Unless there are any corrections or addition, if there's no objection, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted. Item five is invitation of public comment indicating to anyone in the audience who'd like to address the council on any item under new business. If you'll let me know at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and you can come up and introduce yourself and address the council. We have no proclamations this morning. We have one recognition. And I think Florence Howard may be here. And if Florence is not here, I know Clarence Boone, one of our most famous people in this city, is here. I know he can stand in very well if he has to. So is Florence here, Chief President? All right, come on up, Clarence. Have a seat.
Good to see you, buddy. Mayor, you had a great comment. A very famous person. I started looking around.
You don't have to look for it, Clarence.
I thought all the famous people were up there. Good morning, Council and Mayor. We are really thankful to have the opportunity to come before you this morning and just tell you a few things about the African-American Chamber. Of course, Mayor Gist and the council members that represent East Jackson are very familiar with the African-American Chamber. We're just trying to move out a little bit further in the community this year. And we have been in existence for now, soon we'll be in three months, eighteen years. The president last year was Duane Cherry. He resigned, and they came back and got the old guy, who had already been president for sixteen years. And I told them that I would go for two more years. The first thing that I want to talk about is the Jewel Award that we have every year, the last Friday in February, in connection with the Black History Month. It is the twenty-third of February. And this year, since this is the fiftieth anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King, we wanted to go back and try to retrace some of the steps, as many of the steps that we could, with the surrounding counties. So we'll be coming to many of you asking for information that we will need. There were individuals who, they have done a lot of things. They did things for us, but they did not want to be recognized at the time. We're going to touch the counties Madison, Haywood, Hardiman, and Fayette County. And we are asking that if we come to you to recognize these individuals, if you have any information in the city on these individuals. And they came from all walks of life. They didn't just, it wasn't just the African-Americans that came and made contributions. There were a lot of other people. We want to recognize those people. We also, I was just talking with Tony about the new program that we wanted to start this year, and he told me that something was already in place. We wanted to start African-American kids playing tennis. We got them playing golf. We want them to play tennis and get away from all of the hard sports, basketball, football, et cetera, and get into some of the other sports. So we will be starting this program under the Follow Me Program. We have two major functions each year. We have the Jewel Award. We also have the golf tournament. And we certainly appreciate the city's support for supporting us. And last, I would like to tell you, any activity or any economic development, please feel free to call on us. We want to be a part of whatever is going on in Jackson. The African-American Chamber stands ready to assist its council or anything else that's good that's going on in the county for the betterment of Jackson and Madison County. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boone. Appreciate your involvement in the African-American Chamber, a very active group. And we're certainly a part of that on a yearly basis, some of the activities that you do. We're trying to stay actively involved in it. So we appreciate what you all do for our city, most certainly. Item eight, some of the first readings. Consideration of ordinance to rezonate property located in nineteen twenty-six, South Highland Avenue from RS One Single Family Residential District to SC One, planned unit commercial development district comprising two point six oh plus acres. And from RS One Single Family Residential District to B five, Highway Business District comprising five point oh two acres, submitted by Eric Rowland. Dan?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their last meeting, and you have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. Mr. Rowland's property fronts North Highland. He's already has a portion of his property zoned commercial, and he would like to consolidate the rest of his property under commercial class. So what you see on the map in front of you is the rest of his property. It is shown as commercial under our land use plan, so it is in compliance with our land use plan. Mr. Rowland has agreed to, there will be no access to Chester Levy Road. So I know, Vicki, you'll be happy about that. And we've had some issues with that over time, but Mr. Rowland has no intentions to take commercial traffic out onto Chester Levy. All traffic will circulate back into Highland. The area that's north of, on his track, we're showing is SC One because the properties that front on North Highland now, that are in Bonwood, are already zoned SC One. So this matches that zoning. And the rest of the properties in front of him and beside him are B five, so we're matching that. So again, the Planning Commission has recommended approval of it to you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, Council, have any questions on this particular ordinance? This is on first reading, so if we get a motion for approval in a second, we'll have a public hearing. Councilman Cisco?
Is this backing up to all these residential houses? Is that a residential area there?
Well, along Highland, the properties that front are in front of this property on the north side, those are already zoned commercial.
What about all these on Chester Levy Road here?
In Chester Levy Road, these are residential here, but these properties here, all these properties on North Highland are zoned commercial right now. So this adjoins those, and all activity will be oriented to North Highland. And any area that adjoins the residential that's in the back here, there is no access to Chester Levy, and he'll be required to buffer anything that's done to these properties that are back here on Chester Levy.
Okay, any other?
I don't understand all this. Going in these residential areas, that's what we've been doing.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll do approval.
Second.
Have a motion for approval. And a second, before we vote, let me go ahead and have the public hearing on this ordinance. This is on first reading. And I ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. If not, if so, I mean, hold your hand up or stand, seeing none and hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and we have a motion, a second, and additional discussion.
I just want to say that I've talked to several of the people on Chester Levy who I think Councilman Cisco's concerned about, and they saw no reason for me to vote against this.
And Mr. Rowland is here, if you want to hear from him.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, Council, please vote.
And the vote passes with six in favor and one against.
Item two, under first reading, is consideration of ordinance to rezonate property located north of seventeen seventy-five Van Drive, west of the intersection of Rushmead Road and Boyd Drive, from SC One Planned Unit Commercial Development District to RG Three, general residential district containing eighteen point two seven plus acres, submitted by Gary Taylor.
All right, just to orient you on the location map, this is an area that's located near four twelve. Four twelve would be this way. This is Van Drive coming around from Gander Mountain in that area and coming around to Country Club. This is an area already devoted to SC One commercial zoning. It was an area that several years ago was planned for a mall, and it was zoned at that time, but nothing has happened on that. And that's kind of been rebranded as the third phase of the columns now. Gary Taylor and his son are working on a master development, and I have a drawing of that that I'll show you. This is the first phase of what they're calling Creekside at the columns. This is an area that will be devoted to apartments. And you can see there's a large amount of green space, and they're going to be doing some improvements to some water areas, some wet weather conveyances, to turn it into a nice, you know, sort of a stream area with landscaping and a park-like setting. This is the first phase. Again, this is already zoned commercial, but our commercial class, SC One, doesn't allow for residential, so he's seeking the rezoning or a downzoning to residential so that he can accommodate the residential. He has future plans to develop the commercial, and this will all be integrated into a master development, where a lot of developers are looking at concepts like this, where you have a work, a shop, and play, entertainment, all combined into one area. So that's what his plans are, and this is the first phase. Again, this was presented to the Planning Commission at its last meeting, and they have recommended approval of it to you.
Okay, any questions from Council?
I have a question, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Stan, and I may have asked this earlier. Will they come back to you or us as they phase these next, phase two, phase three, phase four?
Well, it's already zoned, so the development plan will go to the Planning Commission, and they will review that development plan for the commercial part once it comes into fruition. The apartments, this plan has already been submitted to the Planning Commission and been approved by them as a part of this rezoning.
Okay, answer my question then.
So, no, it would not come back to this council.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from Council? If not, we'll accept a motion in a second, and then we'll have a public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion for approval or a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any additional discussion? At this time, we'll go ahead and have the public hearing, open the public hearing to see if there's anyone present here who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance. We'll open the public hearing, and anyone wishing to address Council, you may do so at this time. Yes, come on up, sir. If you would, come on up, speaking of the mic, and just introduce yourself and...
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Mayor, committee. My name's Danny Jackson. I live on ninety-eight Grace Lynn Drive, and I think it's going to be a great development. If Gary Taylor has anything to do with it, he could. My concern is Grace Lynn Drive. You had talked about the developer back in the mid-nineties that came from Georgia to develop the mall. Well, at that time, the Planning Commission Committee voted that if that area was ever developed, that Grace Lynn Drive would be turned into, it would be a cul-de-sac at the end. And I'm just wanting to make sure that that, in fact, R.C. Stegall was, he was the chair of that committee. I talked with him yesterday, and he said, yeah, that was definitely what that was.
Listen in.
All I know is the current property that they own is, you know, doesn't include the area that would be cul-de-sac on the back. I know that the development right now shows a large buffer from, you know, that buffers around the development from the north, which would be where the Grayson, where Grayson comes in, and buffers all along Rushmead. And there's no plans on the developer's point to disturb that area or to connect to Rushmead. So I don't, I don't know what...
Well, I could say, yeah, I could see where cul-de-sac in the street would have nothing to do with this particular zoning. I think it may, it may be well for us to maybe do a little investigation from previous minutes and talking with those members that are involved. And if, in fact, a commitment was made at that time to cul-de-sack it, then that would be the city's responsibility, and we want to be people of reward, and we'll do it.
And I can bring that information to you back, all right, second reading, if you'd like.
Yeah, if you would. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, anyone else who'd like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of ordinance? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I think we have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with six members in favor and one voting no.
Okay, item nine, second readings. Yeah, that's where we are. Second readings, consideration of ordinance to rezonate property located at two thirty-six Oilwell Road from OC Office Center, District to SC One Planned Unit Commercial Development District containing point nine two acres, submitted by Brandon DuKant. Council has passed this ordinance on first reading already. Is there a motion for approval? So moved.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Dan. Item two is an ordinance to amend Title fifteen, Chapter nine, pertaining to parking zones, time restrictions, and penalties for violations. This is ordinance on second reading, and the council has approved this ordinance on first reading previously. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with six members in favor and one voting no.
Okay, we had a little time between the first reading and second reading on that particular ordinance. So just as a matter of information, we already have the signage in, two-hour parking to replace one-hour parking on those areas indicated on the first ordinance, first reading ordinance. So those will be going up probably this week, depending on if it's sub-zero temperatures or not. Under new business, item ten, is consideration the state requires CT oh-two-five-three report on debt obligation form for the one point seven million capital outlay note with the Bank of Jackson that was closed on twelve twenty-eight seventeen and approved at the twelve five seventeen council meeting. Now?
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This is a state-required farm, and, whoops, since we have a new councilperson and Ms. Foot, I don't know if you were here at the twelve five meeting or not, but just to refresh everyone's memory here, what we did was a short farm, it's called short farm because it's less than two million dollars, capital outlay note, your capital outlay note, for the H and S or the solid waste fund, which owed the general fund a million, well, actually owed two million, but a million two of that was capital-related. And you can borrow funds legally for anything that's capital-related. The Sportsplex conversely owed the general fund three hundred and fourteen thousand, and we went a little bit further and put in this year's capital also. So we had a total of about a million six eighty-one, and we rounded that to a million seven. And here's the steps, basically, that we had to undertake. State Controller Justin Wilson is very specific in what you have to do to get state approval. We had the certified resolution back on twelve five, and that was for a million seven. And then we had, I presented copies of what these capital improvements were for, a million two hundred and fifty-one thousand on H and S and four hundred and thirty-nine, twenty-nine thousand on the Sportsplex. And then the closing documents that proceed from that were coming down. We did all the tax certification. This was all done by a firm out of Nashville called Bones McAllister LLP. And the item that we're looking at here right now is item eight, which is after the fact. And the reason why it was a late insertion into your package was we had to wait until we actually received the funds, which we did on twelve twenty-eight. It's a little bit out of order because the mayor has already received from the state the approval letter for this loan. This is just sort of a follow-up item. And then I go on to show the private placement letter, the receipt for the note, and we had the counsel opinion from Bone McAllister and from Louis Cobb. So there's a number of things that go into this final document. And all the final document does, it's a statement of debt obligation. It shows how much we're borrowing, the million seven. It shows, on the second page of your copy, it shows how that is to be paid off over the eight years. The interest rate was two point six five from the Bank of Jackson. The other two quotes that we have, because you just have to get three informal quotes, was three point nine five from Bancorp South and three point one seven from First Bank. So there was no real question as to which way to go. So again, it's just a matter of closing out the whole process. And these funds were received in by Ms. Bell last week, and then she will receive them in to the H and S fund, a million two fifty-one, and to the Sportsplex, four hundred and twenty-nine thousand plus closing costs. And then she will use those monies to pay the general fund. And there's nothing wrong with borrowing from the general fund. It's just that we didn't do it in the formal manner. We could have actually taken out a capital outlay note from H and S and Sportsplex to the general fund, but the mayor, Sam, and I and Karen elected to do it totally objectively and transparent by going to an outside entity, being a bank. So is there any questions?
Any questions? Obviously, this is, this motion will authorize the mayor to sign this form, which the controller is looking for us to do. So that's basically what we're doing.
And we've already received approval, Mayor. You got that from Sandy Thompson.
Okay. Yeah.
Mr. LaFune, good morning. What is our fund balance?
Yes, Harvey, I've come prepared. This doesn't affect our fund balance in the general fund. We ended the year with seventeen point one, ending fund balance, and sixteen point four of that was, is unassigned, can be used for other projects as the council approves. Now, for the year, if you remember, we did budget for a three point two million dollar shortfall. And due to some good work by the departments in controlling their expense and good revenues collections on sales tax and property tax, we ended up with a one point six million dollar shortfall. That shortfall, I can, I think I can guarantee you, will be erased in the future. We now have some six hundred, I mean, some five hundred thousand dollars a month coming in from the motion and the passage of the school sales tax funds, so right at six million dollars per year. So unless we are hit with something catastrophic in the way of a tornado or something flooding or something of that issue, we should be in a positive mode going forward in FY eighteen, which we're already going out and getting, Ms. Bell has already sent out to the departments asking them for their capital needs. And, you know, we normally in March and April put together the budget for presentation to you in May, and second passage in June. So we're a little bit ahead of the schedule. We will be coming to you in next month's meeting and requesting to borrow funds for the capital that would be in the budget that we would ask you to approve. In other words, you can't approve spending money for streets and fire, police vehicles, et cetera, until you already have a commitment for those funds. That doesn't mean we're going to draw them down right away. Usually, it's like a line of credit. You draw down what you need. And just for, I know this isn't subject matter right now, but Harvey and I discussed a little bit before the meeting. I always try to come prepared for Harvey. And I say that with all due respect because he asks very pertinent questions. But here's where we are at. Bottom line, if I can get this to come over, we have right now debt totaling eighty-two million eight. And we are paying off, as you can see, and that's, this is principal, eight million four this year, seven million three next year. Actually, we're going to pay off a little bit more than eight-four because we're going to come over here as part of that agreement with the county, and we're going to pay off this one million four mixed drink tax. And we're also going to pay off, not with the agreement with the accounting, but just because we feel we can do it, this six hundred and ninety thousand. So we're going to pay down more like ten million dollars this year, and then we're going to come back and ask you, quite frankly, to borrow about nine million. You've already approved the construction of a new city court at roughly three million, and then six million would be for our normal road projects, police, fire, parks and rec, all of those type developments. So we're actually paying off, and we're not taking on any additional debt. And that was the mayor's plan when he came to office, was each year or consecutive couple of years, as we borrow, normally for more than one year, that we pay off as much as we borrow. So that'll be next February, the next meeting, excuse me, I think February sixth. And we'll be following somewhat of a different process. These are capital outlay notes. We'll be going out for quotes on twenty-year, either fixed or variable. In the past, we have gone, the last two times we have borrowed money was a fifteen point three million variable rate loan in two thousand and thirteen and a seventeen point four million in two thousand and fifteen. And we were living in fat city because our variable rate, the CIFMA rate, was something like point six five. And then the spread by First Tennessee Bank was point seven five, and the administrative fees by Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund is point one five. So in total, we were borrowing money at about one point three five or one point four five. With all of the things that are happening with the Fed, the new tax legislation, and just world factors that I, it's far above my head, but that CIFMA rate has jumped from point six five. It spiked in December to points, to one point seven one, which threw us up to about a two point two five variable rate. And the concern is that it could go further. The mayor and I and Sam have discussed this. So we probably will be borrowing on a fixed-rate basis with a guaranteed ten-year fixed rate. And then subsequent to that, for the other ten years, it will be open to renegotiation. But we have, for example, this first fifty-eight million dollars over here is at three point eight four. This six million here is at about three point six, and this here at fixed rate is at three point four. So you can see that even though we're now seeing the CIFMA rate jump... So you can see that even though we're now seeing the SIFMA rate jump, we've made hundreds of thousands of dollars are saved, and I would venture to say over this last six years, it's been well over a million dollars by borrowing on a variable rate. But that now may be questionable, and that'll be presented to the council for your judgment and opinion also.
Thank you.
Councilman, you okay with that fund?
Say it again.
You okay with that fund balance?
The fund balance is okay.
Okay, good. Just for information from the council, we're jumping ahead a little bit on next year's capital simply because, asking the council to approve borrowing those additional funds because of the anticipated and almost assured fact that interest rates are going up, and we're trying to hit it off and get that, get that funding early and try to beat the jump in interest rate, so that's basically how we're, how we're doing it. Where are we, anyway, on this agenda? Anybody, anybody know? Nita, where are we?
We need to vote on item one.
Yes, okay, we're voting on, on the right to have the mayor sign this form for the control. Motion for a second? Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thanks, Al. Item two, on new business, we've got some streets to accept on the planning department, calling Street Acceptance, Shallow Springs Subdivision, we'll just take these all in one vote, I think. Anybody want me to read all of them? You got them in front of you? Okay, we'll, we'll accept a motion for approval for, except these streets as listed.
Move the approval.
We have a motion for approval and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Board appointments would be Mayor's Advisory Council on Domestic and Sexual Violence, Jennifer McGraw, Michelle Reddick, Jane Jarvis, Jody Pickens, Kathy Brunton, Hugh Harvey. Is there a motion for approval?
So move.
A motion, second?
Second.
Got a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
On the Environmental Advisory Appeals Board, Joel McAlexander, a reappointment for Mr. McAlexander. Is there a motion, got a motion for approval, second?
Second.
And a second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And also, under the Ned McQuarrie West Tennessee Cultural Arts Center, we have Hampton Williams scheduled for a reappointment to serve on that board. Is there a motion?
So move.
A motion?
Second.
Second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, item four, Ms. Bell, the budget amendments.
We have two budget amendments. This is my first amendment that you have before you is for the A&amp;E Cities to reconstruct the city court building in the amount of $101,100. Just they require draw on the amount in the cap.
So move.
A motion, is there a second to that?
Second.
Have a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
The second amendment that you have before you is related to the borrowing of the 1.7 million dollars. This is to add $19,580 to the current year's capital for the Sportsplex fund in relation to the terms of being borrowed in the 1.7 million.
So move.
A motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bell. Item five, this proposal invoices over $10,000. Do we have a motion? We have a motion over here to my left. Is there a second? A second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Before we adjourn, let me ask you to keep the family of James Wolf in your prayers. Denise LaSalle passed away, we think, this morning after some obvious amputation to her, and we want to keep them and certainly in her prayers and appreciate that family. So based upon that, no further business, meeting is adjourned.